Yeah.
Okay, the regular meeting for March fifteenth will commence. Our next public workshop is next Tuesday, March twenty first at ten AM. We're in this room from now on.
Yes.
And next regular meeting will be March twenty second at ten thirty AM in this room. If you bear with us, too, we're doing somewhat of a trial run with the cameras and the new video system and hopefully working the bugs out so that we aim to be live by next week. Okay, if you can please rise. Do you want me in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is famous, one way under intervention of
and justice for all.
Okay, can you bow your heads and join me in reciting the Lord's prayer? Our Father.
Lord in heaven, thou shalt be thy name, thy kingdom come, that wilt be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
Right, Mr. Ragler, and pray, because not all of us just do the recitation of the prayer.
Yeah, we can have them next week, that would be great.
I'm just saying that the recitation is Catholic and not everyone is Catholic.
Okay, we rotated through, if I'd known in advance, I would absolutely have them in advance.
You do what I do, you keep on going because it's not.
Yeah.
I know.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Here.
Ms. French Co.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Okay, item number one, to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated March eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, and approve them as distributed and printed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
No.
Item number two, to approve the bills.
Motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number three, to authorize a member of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to sign, countersign on behalf of the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services, the contracts listed on March eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, the contracts create sixteen training opportunities and ten job opportunities at a total cost of one hundred sixty-five thousand, one hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Because none of us were provided a copy of the contracts to review, no.
Never seen any contracts associated with this internal action, so, but, thank you.
Item number four, to award all bids submitted for the purchase of asphalt concrete and asphalt emulsion CMS to S for the use by Trumbull County Engineer for the period of April first, two thousand and twenty-three, through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, and enter into contract with each company listed for all the materials which the companies bid, and they were Tri-County Asphalt Materials, Marzine Incorporated, let's don't co-incorporate AIDS, that's doing business as allied corporation.
A motion to approve.
Thank you. Second.
Well.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number five, to award all bids submitted for the purchase of By-Tu-Minis materials for the use by the Trumbull County Engineer for the period of April first, two thousand and twenty-three, through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, and enter into a contract with each company listed, and that is Suit Coat Corporation, Unique Paving Materials Corporation, Russell Standard Corporation, and Giada Highway Company.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number six, to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permits, that is Clay Trucking Incorporated, Ron Yak Brothers Paving, Gibbs Construction Incorporated.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number seven, to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed, that's Dominion East Ohio, Peoples Management LLP, and Ashley Hasenour.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number eight, to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to grant the special hauling permit to haul steel coils, and this is with Jaro Transportation Services Incorporated.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number nine, to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to grant the quarterly operator fleet permit to travel upon load-posted Trumbull County roadways, and that is H and K Logging and Lumber.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number ten, to acknowledge receipt of the proposal of the TRU Cemetery Bridge, Newton Township, which consists of the rehabilitation of the historic pedestrian bridge, which spans the west branch of the Mahoning River and connects Newton Township's east and west cemeteries, and to authorize the clerk of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to re-advertise for sealed bids the TRU Cemetery Bridge project, as no bids were received for said project that was previously advertised on agenda dated February first, two thousand and twenty-three, Journal Volume one fifty-six, page two five four three three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number eleven, to acknowledge and approve a memorandum of understanding and additional conditions that will become part of said MOU by and among the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, the Trumbull County Engineer, and the South Pymatuming Township are related to the Brockway Sharon Road Improvements Project located in Hartford Township, Trumbull County, Ohio, and South Pymatuming Township, Mercer County, Pennsylvania. The western half of Brockway Sharon Road is maintained by Trumbull County, and the eastern half of Brockway Sharon Road is maintained by South Pymatuming Township. Note, ORC Section five 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 point eight one states that the Board of Commissioners are required to be a party to improvements made to state line roads.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala.
Discussion, I just wanted to point out that the memorandum of understanding has already been approved by our prosecutor's office and thank the highway engineer for sending us the verification so that we could vote on it knowing that it's already been approved.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number twelve, to approve the personnel action for employment of Mr. Robert Gilmer for the position of custodian with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department effective April third, two thousand and twenty-three, pay range three, zero years, that's fourteen dollars and ten cents, pursuant to an authorized job posting. And this action is per the recommendation of the Human Resources Department in conjunction with the
Thank you.
Engineers Department.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Um, I just wanted to mention something about this first. I would like to see emails sent out to the applicants as well, because what I saw was that they reached out to call people and didn't get called back. So because of that, some of them weren't able to be interviewed, and I think it's a good practice to make sure you're interviewing the, or you're sending an email too, if you're requesting an interview, so that you have some verification that you actually reached out.
Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number thirteen, to approve the personnel action for the employment of Cali Beach as a telecommunicator with the Trumbull County nine-one-one Center effective March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Miss Beach will be paid the rate of seventeen dollars and two cents per hour and serve a one hundred and eighty-day probationary period.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, I just wanted to say that the ranking tool is incredibly subjective, and we should have ranking tools for hiring that are objective, so that they can't be manipulated for certain people. And also, I didn't receive a copy of the rubric associated with this. And that's to Patty Goldner, hopefully she's listening and will address those things. Or work with human resources, because we have very splintered hiring processes in the county, we've got nine-one-one doing their own thing, sanitary engineers, jobs and family services. And it also begs the question, if we're going to have decentralized hiring, do we really need as much staff over in HR? But nonetheless, I think it's important that we have some centralized processes countywide.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number fourteen, to accept the resignation of Mr. Charles Miller of the Trumbull County Flood Plane Variance Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number fifteen, to appoint the individuals listed as members of the Trumbull County Flood Plane Variance Board for three-year terms commencing April first, two thousand and twenty-three, through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Note, two vacancies needed to fill due to the resignation of Mr. Charles Miller and the untimely passing of Mr. Thomas Glad. But those new members will be Tony Beats and Mr. John E. Hickey.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number sixteen, to authorize the Trumbull County Planning Commission to prepare and submit a request for funding through the FY twenty-four CDS appropriation process for the construction of the Larchmont Sanitary Sewer Extension Project, and authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to execute a letter of support for the same. The proposed project consists of extending a thirty-six-inch sanitary sewer line northerly along Larchmont Avenue across the Warren Outer Belt in order to provide sanitary sewer service to dozens of existing businesses and provide development opportunities for underutilized land in Trumbull County, and authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to execute a letter of support for additional appropriation requests that are being submitted by other entities that include but are not limited to economic development and the sustainability of the Youngstown Air Reserve Station. Copies of these letters of support will be provided to the commissioners on or before their Wednesday meeting, the request for approving the letters of support is necessary due to the pending deadline for the appropriation request of March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number seventeen, to establish the creation of the Commissioners' Grant Fund, known as Fund One-O-One, for use by the Trumbull County Board of Trumbull County Commissioners. The fund is being created to account for monies in the amount of nine thousand, one hundred seventy-five dollars that was awarded to the Trumbull County Agriculture and Family Education Center for repairs to steps and an observation deck. The grant was obtained through Senator Sandra O'Brien HB six eight seven and the Ohio Department of Agricultural, Agriculture.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number eighteen, to adopt the annual appropriation resolution to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures of Trumbull County during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, for the General Fund Oh-Oh-One and all other funds of Trumbull County.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala.
Discussion. I just wanted to make sure it's in the record that the Board of Commissioners did not contribute in one way towards developing the budget, though
Point of order.
Developing the budget is the statutory responsibility of the Board of Commissioners. In Trumbull County, it's been past practice to give that duty to the auditor. That's not the auditor's statutory duty, could you imagine if in the state of Ohio, the auditor prepared the budget for the legislature? That's how backwards this is, and it's been going on and going on. We had no discussion that led to any decision-making relative to this budget. It's not done in any other county by another elected official for whom it's not their statutory duty. I believe this needs to change.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
No.
Item number nineteen, to record onto the Journal for record purposes the allocations as listed from the two thousand and twenty-three sales tax revenues in the General Fund zero zero one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Because the Board of Commissioners has received no verification that this is accurate, and it was just told to the other commissioners Monday, and I received an unsigned paper stating that this is what it was without signatures or meeting minutes. I, I would have to vote no, we should, if you want to trust, trust, but at least verify.
These certificates, as I've stated, cannot be signed until the budget is passed, I gave some documents, and Ms. Santangelo said she would be happy to provide those to the board. I know the auditor's office will be, had to change their schedule to work on the budget for the rest of the week, but they will provide these to the board for you.
Minutes as well.
Minutes, ma'am, when I have an extra second, I worked sixteen hours this weekend, including Sunday and Saturday and Friday night, I, I will get you the minutes.
The minutes from the, the minutes from, the minutes from this meeting have not been provided to anyone to see even what occurred, but yet we're expected to vote on something. It's, it's, it's a problem, so I, I don't, we're, we're here, we're here not to give excuses, and again, I just want to say the clerk should not be inserting herself into the conversation of the board, thank you.
We, we did have a meeting, a budget meeting on Monday during the general meeting, and we had Martha Yoder, our new auditor, and we had Ms. Santangelo there that went over any questions and all questions that we had regarding this stuff, and provided any paperwork that we requested at that meeting, and once again, I would advise it would have been nice for you to be a part of it, to see it as the twenty-two other people in the room that day saw it.
Danny. Please. The, the meeting Tuesday was pushed back to Monday to accommodate one commissioner's schedule. On top of that, there's no surveillance in that office where anything at the commissioner, I'm sorry, at the planning commission meeting. After what happened last week with our thug sheriff taking my, my phone, I'm not, I'm not going to go anywhere that no, it's, it's, it's not appropriate for anyone to interfere with a public meeting, and I, I believe we need to make sure that we have video surveillance that in every building where there's a public meeting as a result of what happened over there last week. And, and nothing, I, I did listen to the meeting, and there was nothing, you didn't engage in the conversation, Mr. Malloy, you, you just said that you were trusting what they were telling you. If you're just going to trust what you're telling you.
It's passed back and forth.
No, I, I heard it.
And if you had something you wanted to request.
I, I heard it, and I've also requested meetings since last year, since I started actually to have more budget hearings and budget meetings, so that the public can be aware of what's going on, because the commissioners don't participate at all. What I did hear yesterday, what, from the meeting on Monday, was that an acknowledgement that the people in the auditor's office allow all, allow the departments to go into the red and fix it at the end of the year, that's not budgeting.
Item number twenty, we did vote on, went to make sure we voted on number nineteen, it's very important, so I, I'm going to call the roll again, Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
And Commissioner French Co.
No.
Thank you. Item number twenty, to adopt a resolution that application be made is provided in the Ohio Revised Code Sections five seven zero five point one five and five seven zero five point one six to transfer the sum of three hundred thirty-one thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars from the Trumbull County Children's Services Board Fund Number zero one two to the Child Assault Prosecution Unit within the Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office designated as Prosecutor's State Grant Fund Number one zero four, and that the Trumbull County Prosecutor and the clerk of the Board of Commissioners be and are hereby authorized to take all actions necessary to effectuate this resolution and to acknowledge the memorandum of understanding two thousand and twenty-three between the Trumbull County Children's Services Board and the Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office for two thousand and twenty-three funding for the Child Assault Prosecution, Prosecution Unit.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number twenty-one, to authorize payment of fifty-one thousand, five hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety-nine cents to the Eastgate Regional Council of Governments. Dues for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-three, local dues are required to match federal and state funds at various ratios for the Eastgate Regional Council of Governments, different funding programs, and it will be broke down for the commissioners, the county engineer, and the sanitary engineer, and they each will pay seventeen thousand, one hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty-three cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number twenty-two, is to authorize a liquor permit, it's a transfer, and it's from Dale Soynop Sonsky, and it's doing business as Candy Wood Cellar and Patio, and it's going to see W. Cellar LLC doing business as Candy Wood Cellar.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number twenty-three, to concur with the Trumbull County nine-one-one Center to utilize services for conducting employment background checks between Trumbull County nine-one-one and Armor Risk Management LLC. Trumbull County nine-one-one will pay Armor Risk Management seven hundred dollars each for the first five dispatcher background investigations totaling three thousand, five hundred dollars. Any additional dispatcher background investigations will be the normal price of seven hundred fifty dollars each for the remainder of the two thousand and twenty-three calendar year. Normally, these investigations take between seven and ten working days to complete.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. I, I didn't receive a copy of any type of request for qualifications or request for quotes about this, I don't remember the board authorizing this activity to go out and to request these things for these services. I also want to point out that this is a department where there is extremely high turnover, so seven hundred and fifty dollars associated with every every applicant, I think, is, is high. I, I'm looking at what I was provided, and even what I was provided is not standard, whenever we have a request for qualifications or request for quotes or RFP, we usually get some type of a spreadsheet that shows who is the best and why. On top of that, we have again, splintered hiring practices in which things could be centralized. If we have a obscenely high-paid HR interim director over there who claims to have forty-five years of experience, I'm wondering why he hasn't assisted in this, and why we can't have other HR people centrally located helping to vet all candidates for jobs across the county, rather than spending additional money in a department that regularly is over budget and spending at an unsustainable rate.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
No.
Item number twenty-four, to rescind the agenda item dated March first, two thousand and twenty-three, Volume one fifty-six, page two five five zero one, approving the personnel action for the employment of Ms. Alexandra Divergency Bush to the position of Human Resources Director with the Trumbull County Human Resources Department effective Monday, March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion to rescind the agenda item dated March first, two thousand and twenty-three, approving the personnel action for the employment of Alexandra Divergency Bush to the position of Human Resources Director. She will be paid at a rate that's not appropriate to her years of experience, and the candidate did not meet the minimum qualifications for the job posting, and
There is no discussion.
I'm reading, I'm reading.
I read it.
There's not a second. Reading, I'm reading, I'm reading, I'm reading that a note that I provided, and every other item has a special note. If you reduce the qualifications for employment and then hire someone with if you don't reduce, no, 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 you're just trying to throw me off of what I'm saying, and it's, and it's a go ahead, so, so the, what I was saying is the candidate did not meet minimum qualifications for the job description, therefore, it should be, if they want that the board intends to hire someone who doesn't meet the job description for the qualifications, then, then they
On the agenda.
Then they should.
That's not allowable by Robert.
They should.
Orders, you're going in discussion.
That's not true.
You're going in discussion, it's not on the agenda item.
No, it's a special note, every other agenda item has a note. It doesn't matter, I'm reading it, you know, I'm reading it.
Watching you write it as you go.
No, I'm reading my special note.
Okay.
That, that, no.
Is there a second?
No. You're opening your
A second, the motion dies.
No, you're accounting up for liability by not, if you're going to allow someone a job that's not qualified, then you're then you're putting yourself at risk, because other people who, who would be qualified with a lower qualifications were, were not applicants.
Number twenty-five, to approve the posting and national advertising for the position of Trumbull County Human Resources Director, this position.
I'd like to make a motion to table this, because I think that we need to look at restructuring.
Motion will die for lack of a second.
Okay.
Is there a motion on the table for number twenty-five? It'll strike number twenty-five from the agenda?
No, it's the motion dies for lack of a second.
There was no.
Exactly.
The motion died for lack of a first.
Okay, well, for lack of a first, but it's not the striking it from the agenda, it's, it has to exist. Clerk, I just want you to know that that has to exist as a record. Don't strike it from the agenda, or you'd be violating open records.
Item number twenty-six, to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditures for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act funds. This is what, going to support Dr. Metal Roofing and Construction, whereas the county has received a distribution of monies, the ARPA funds, from the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one, whereas Congress passed the act effective March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. And this will support the replacement of the annexed building roof at the fair in the amount of sixteen thousand, five hundred, seventy-three dollars and ten cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. The, it's important. This is an extremely important project, it was going to get delayed to the point where it wasn't going to get on or done by the time of the fair. I worked with the Tanya to make sure that we had the proper language last week, so that we can get it done immediately. The problem that I have with this, though I'm, I'm still voting for it, is that we, we need to make sure that we're having a consistent request for quotes process in the county, I've been asking for this to happen, and it's to no avail, you know, we have when we get quotes and you pick up the phone and you call them, and only one person responds, it looks funny. So to have an actual request for the quotes with the Trumbull County's title on the front, saying what you want, which is that all the costs need to be itemized, which is protects you from audit, especially as it relates to ARPA, because there are certain rules that apply to that. I think it's important at this point that the board instruct all of our staff in, in maintenance to use something in writing when they're requesting quotes, rather than picking up the phone and calling on this, in this particular case, we do have three, but sometimes we have less than that, and it's a good practice. Baker, Dubicar, Beck, Wiley, and Matthews actually offered to do a, a standard request for quotes, saying what we need, I think that that's a good idea to have them do that, so whoever it is, if it's maintenance or building department, they're able to plug in what they're requesting and make sure they're doing it, and They're able to plug in what they're requesting and make sure they're doing it in an audit-proof fashion. Would would the board agree to have a proper request for quotes because there was no written request? It also promotes transparently transparency to show that everyone was asked the same thing and told the same thing.
There were three quotes given and I'm fine with that.
And they're not, yes, and they're not exact. Sometimes they come in not exactly the same.
It's your opinion.
It's not an opinion.
Yes, it is. If you come to the workshop and understand it, you.
No, I understand. I understand. I actually oversaw construction projects. This was something that I did as a HUD consultant. So.
Now you're a construction.
No, no.
Carpet installer, construction manager, lawyer, engineer. Let's move on, please.
Had two or three consultants.
Item number twenty-six will be Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty-seven. Item number twenty-six supports this agenda item, which is to accept and award the proposal submitted by. D R Metal Roofing and Construction for the replacement of the Trumbull County Fairground Annex Building Roof. In the amount not to exceed sixteen thousand, five hundred seventy-three dollars and ten cents. Other proposals that were submitted were Dan Faith Construction. They came in at seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars. G C Metal Sales eighteen thousand, eight hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Dave Willtrout Roofing Incorporated twenty thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Motion approve.
Second.
And discussion. Do you have a problem if women have construction or maintenance experience that you don't?
Point of order.
No, I just I just wonder. You were just insulting me about being a HUD two or three K consultant and and I don't know if you know what that is.
Please, can we move on?
Okay.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty-eight to authorize payment of three hundred eighty dollars as a settlement in the case of Philip Evans versus Trumbull County Sheriff's Department. Trumbull County Court of Common, please. Case number three zero three-two dash C V dash one zero three four.
Motion approve.
Second.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss Frenchco.
Yes.
That concludes our. Agenda items. We'll open up the floor for.
Just really quickly, I'm sorry, Sharon, then you can go. Just for the record of clarification. There are certain agenda items that we vote on that we have discussion on. We discuss them, just so everyone knows. In a public work session, we did that yesterday ad nauseam. We did it for hours. A lot of people were there. I'm sorry, Monday. My days are running together, but we do that thoroughly. And if I'm not. Correcting or going into different things, it's because I want to expedite this meeting and get through it. But I am available to explain my position to the press or anyone else that would like to hear it. So for purposes of getting through this meeting, though. You know, I wasn't going to sit there and argue. So but I have, there are differences of opinion for sure.
I've got an issue too.
Okay.
Bring up if we could. I got a complaint, or I shouldn't say complaint. I got an inquiry from our nine-one-one department twice. The Commissioner Frenchco had called on a recorded line to inquire about an occurrence that happened at her residence. And she wanted to know who the dispatcher was that leaked it to the media that this occurred at your residence. You're on a nine-one-one tape. This is this is pertinent. I feel that by her calling there and interfering in the investigation, it violates ethics. That if it's she's inquiring about a crime that occurred at her house that she was allegedly accused of. She called nine-one-one to see who leaked it to the media. I talked to the media afterward. Found out where the source was, which was not nine-one-one. And at the same time, she called again, or she sent an email again yesterday. Asking about the status of the investigation that she requested from nine-one-one. There is a recorded nine-one-one tape of her calling. On that day, instead of calling the supervisor on her phone number or cell number, she called nine-one-one to talk to the supervisor. For three and a half minutes, she she tied up a nine-one-one emergency line while she waited to get to a supervisor to discuss the incident. That happened at her house. After she got the supervisor, she then talked to him about the incident. And in her statement, she said. If there was a leak from nine-one-one regarding this, we just fired somebody for this. I want to know who did this. I have a written statement from. The assistant at nine-one-one. I have a copy of the recorded tape available for the media if you want it. And I would like to ask Maro at a time I talked to the prosecutors about this, the sheriff and the police chief who handled the call at the residence. And I think we need to ask the state attorney general or the special prosecutor to investigate this. Because at the least, I think this is highly unethical to involve yourself. Are accused of being committed of committing.
This is unbelievable.
And the prosecutor said they can't handle it themselves because they represent all three of us as a board. But they advise the same thing. We may want to ask the state to look into this on their own and provide any documentation. What we have.
If there's.
No, I I'll I'll respond to that, Denny. There is, our county policy, which you haven't read yet. Says that you're not allowed to share anything with anyone unless it's been done through public records request if you're an employee of the county.
Where does that say in the policy exactly?
You haven't read it either, Maro?
Where where is that language exactly in the policy? Because that's not in there. It's all public records, Commissioner.
It actually, no, it actually is in that. And Kath and the employee who was disciplined, I think her file might be here, but that was one of the reasons that was cited. Was for sharing something that was not public, public record requested. So.
It doesn't matter if it was requested. You can share a public record.
Same thing that you were being alleged to be accused of here of interfering with a crime that you were accused of committing. And you were heading it off in the past by interfering yourself. County Commissioner.
You're out of line for discussing this. No, it's not about, it's not, it's not about.
They make the nine-one-one call on a nine-one-one recorded line.
It's not about the need, it's not about the media. The media did request something, but it was leaked. But on top of that, it's, things are being sent to the organization that's. That is positioned to try to remove me from office. I mean, when you've got nine-one-one employees sharing things with. A commissioner's ex-husband.
A day before you called nine-one-one on a Friday. This was alleged to have occurred on Wednesday. And it was already on media, social media on Thursday. You called on Friday to inquire when Stan Boney had inquired. With the nine-one-one center, it was already, it was already public information all over the world on the worldwide web for more than twenty-four hours.
Okay.
Everybody knew about it. And I just think it's highly unethical for somebody to use their titles, Commissioner, especially someone that knows nine-one-one is for emergency uses only. To dial nine-one-one.
No.
To ask to talk to supervisor.
This is ridiculous.
It's true.
I called Patty Goldner and she was on vacation.
Yeah, you called nine-one-one.
No, so I. She was.
I have the tape. I'll release it to the media. I have a copy of the nine-one-one tape where you where they said who you were. You were looking for Patty Goldner. You asked if she was still on vacation. You asked for a supervisor.
These personal, personal attacks, personal attacks during public meetings are absolutely not called for.
I can address this publicly with Maro to ask if we can go over the prosecutor's head to have someone investigate this. This is highly unethical when you involve yourself in an open investigation. There is an open police investigation of a drug theft at your house. There's an open investigation.
There's not a, there's no open.
We can provide the police report.
Of a nine-one-one call that stemmed from your house and you called nine-one-one to threaten the employees there. To to find out who is the one that told the media about.
Attacks and bullying and has no place in government.
This is facts. This is facts.
You ran on making meetings boring and being professional and bringing professionalism to the county and staying on topic. And you've been nothing but continuing the legacy of Frank, even even passing off and using the rubber stamp. And and your mis- misappropriate comments that have, that have nothing, that have nothing to do with county business.
I was, I was approached by an employee to look into those, to ask what should I do, Commissioner? I can't give an answer to that employee without addressing it in a public, public meeting with consent of the board. I'm asking for consent of the board to advise Mister Laird and Miss Goldner what to do with this. They feel very uncomfortable with this being that you are their boss. We talked to the prosecutor's office. They feel very uncomfortable handling this thing. And I am asking.
I understand, I understand that you guys just had a bad news day.
Yes, I do consent.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
That we, that we, we've sent, send the copies of what we have to the Ethics Commission and ask the Attorney General to to send someone inside. Of Trumbull County to investigate this, to see if there was anything unethical or illegal about you intervening yourself in a call relating to you. At nine-one-one. Thank you, Mark.
This is ridiculous. Okay.
And we will provide information over to the prosecutor's office to ask for assistance for them to turn it over to someone outside the county to look into this. So we're not involved. You're not involved. None of us here are involved as to not taint the issue or look like we're impartial.
So. No one, is anyone delving into Maro, you know, the deleting his phone records that were public that would that. Related to criminal. No, what I'm saying is, we were, you're an elected official.
We're not covering up for each other up here.
No, you are.
That's what you're saying.
I have no idea.
Since you said this, I'm looking out for you for this.
No, seriously, you deleted your phone message.
This is what happens. She deflects and she tries to make up and shift the blame to somebody else. Unfortunately, we're talking about this issue. I've never deleted one phone message.
You said your phone is on auto delete and it's.
It is after sixty days.
You said it was after thirty before. You must have changed it to sixty and you know that as an elected official, you need to make sure that those are maintained.
That's the setting that came from, I I'm not entertaining this discussion with you. This is nonsense. And this is trying to, trying to play some weird political game. What you've done, Commissioner, is borderline criminal and unethical. Yes, let's stick on topic. Let's say.
Does leading exculpatory evidence is what your sister-in-law did and it's what you did too?
Again.
I simply asked.
I'm not going to argue with a full, I'm sorry.
Boys asked me what to do and I did my job as Commissioner in a public setting by addressing the issue.
The bias is, the bias is evident. All, all you two do.
Given to Miss Leonard and Mister Boney, they asked for two weeks ago, they already have it. And now if you'd like a copy yourself. I can forward the email to you and I'll copy the tape and the copy of the email that she sent to Mister Laird yesterday. Asking an update on the investigation she requested. Anyone else in the crowd?
Because employees should be investigated when they're doing things contrary to county policy.
Correct. And that's exactly what we're doing. Employees or Commissioners. Yes, you may.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am here on behalf of the Mespo Historical Society as the Vice President. We have applied for a grant dated May twenty-second, I'm sorry, May twenty-six, twenty twenty-two for sixty-five thousand dollars. Our building is in some need of handicapped and health issues. The building was built in nineteen, I'm sorry, the, the, sorry. The Historical Society was built or made in nineteen seventy-three. And so I gave everybody a packet. I gave one to Commissioner Frenchco this morning. And we are asking that this grant be processed onto the attorney's office. And if you have any questions, there's also some information there.
Well, we went, we went over this yesterday, or I'm sorry, Monday, Karen and I, I'm fully ready to move this on to the, to the. To our attorney. I think that. We went over the benefits of this and and a lot of this will fall under category one. But I think that we need to get a. An attorney's opinion on this. Mespo area is one that's not typically. You know, it goes unnoticed sometimes. We want to change that. So this is one way we can do that. We know that you've grown. The Historical Society by leaps and bounds. So I have no problem moving that along to the attorney.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I agree, so.
Okay, I I like to respond. We have dozens of ARPA applications that are just sitting. That no one has had a public meeting on. I've requested a process when I started. Or whenever they announced the money that we have public meetings and we have everything together so that we can decide at one time. Instead of just the, the other two commissioners saying, okay, we're gonna try to push this through or this through, this through. I believe that we need to have a, a public meeting with all of the applications. Knowing the funding that's left and making decisions on what's going to be funded and what's not. So that we don't have applicants waiting for ARPA money. We have a historical society in McDonald that requested, I think, twelve thousand dollars. And no one, or it was very small ask, but the Board of Commissioners does not have a centralized. File of everything that's been brought in. So I requested to have at least an Excel spreadsheet put together.
We've had it.
No.
It probably.
No, I, I'm. No. Let me, no, don't, no, we don't interrupt me. Okay, so what you're looking at is a MUNA spreadsheet. The MUNA spreadsheet only is a report and it only shows the ones that have been entered. It doesn't show the status update on them. It doesn't show if they've been applied for on the proper forms, doesn't show categorically how it's been spent. So that we can see category one, two, three or four. I requested things to help the commissioners make. The final decisions on these. And I think the final decisions, now that we have a new board composition. Should be done publicly because I tried to do this at one time before when Frank was here. And he kept saying, no, now that Denny's here, I'd like to ask him if we can have a public meeting with all of the documents to make the final decisions. Together as a board so that we don't leave communities hanging as to whether or not we're going to fund their projects.
We're, we're not leaving communities hanging. Number one, we've spent a great deal on a lot of worthwhile projects. We've sent others to the, that you voted on, that you consented on, that we sent to the attorney. This is a process. It's not just. What, hey, we're gonna put this on the agenda. There's a lot that goes into this with Jim Masaki, our attorney, there.
You don't deal, you don't deal with Jim Masaki or the attorneys until you've actually looked at all of them together. So we've never had a public meeting where we've looked, where we've looked, we've never had a public meeting. Where we've looked at every single application and said, these ones were funded. These ones are be, are sent for requests of opinion. These ones are still out here. We have people requesting small. Contributions toward road projects and townships and other projects. And we need to be able to let them know whether or not we're going to fund them. We need to make these final decisions. So we're not leaving communities hanging and we absolutely are because there's not even a follow-up. Once we receive the application, once we receive the application to the applicant to say, hey, this is on the wrong form. And I know that because we still have some applications that no one was instructed to go through. Our website to file that application. So we've had people come in with their applications, almost leaving the building without. Before I said, hey, you have to go through and file it the right way on our website. So we need to have a public meeting, look at all the applications that are left and make that decision in public instead of. You know, we like this one or we like this one or we're gonna push this one through.
Commissioner, can I say one thing?
If we look at the workshop last week, I asked Mr. Masaki the following week, meaning Monday. We can invite the ARP people that are waiting out there to come and talk about so we can prioritize. We spent at least. Forty-five minutes of our meeting on Monday talking specifically about ARP things. We had twenty-two people there and I think we had five or six people that gave presentations on their projects they already submitted. I encourage that every week for them to come in and do that. I would be more than open to having a meeting just regarding that. I have concerns. We have fifteen million dollars supposedly left in the fund. I've publicly stated, I'd like to see half of that get out to the townships before our own county agencies absorb and hog all the money up. Not that those programs are bad, but I made a commitment. I think we need a commitment to the county to make sure that money gets spread all over the county. We make the right, the right choices. So nobody gets left behind on that and we do prioritize. So that is something if you want a public meeting.
I do, but, but I don't want that. And so we have the actual Excel spreadsheet that shows the status of everything. Like I requested from staff.
The meeting, I know it's online. They showed me where I could.
That's not it. That's not what I'm looking for. And that's not what you need to see to be able to decide either. You're talking about the MUNA reports that are there and that doesn't give us everything that we need to know.
I mean, it's simple.
So I, no, it's not.
Know what we spent and then we know what's left. We can look it up ourselves if we want to.
No, I I asked staff to do something and I hope it's getting done.
To do it for you instead of us to do it ourselves.
Yes.
I'm more than happy.
We have administered.
Copy, but when I'm done, I'm great, but I'm more than happy to do it.
There's a copy of the MUNA report, but that doesn't give us the things that I'm looking for in an Excel spreadsheet. And now that I've gone since February second without a computer and I know, and I was told. That Maro had to change her heart on letting me trading with me.
Commissioner, may I say something?
So, so I don't have Excel. So that's why I'm asking that, I mean, staff should be doing this. That's what we have administrative staff for.
Okay, Commissioner Frenchco, I can tell you my experience with the ARP funding. So we actually submitted the applications off your line, online. And then I got ahold of Masaki and actually emailed him everything. He actually did get back to me on mine. I had filled out the wrong application. I filled out the correct application. I had been in contact with him several times. He told me I need to come to workshop. So I understand what you're saying, but Squeaky will get the attention. If the people out there ask for grant money, they need to spend the hours that I have done for the last six weeks coming to a meeting and learning about it and coming to the workshops and discussing.
That website wasn't even up and running until after half of the application, not half of the, there was dozens of them that came in before that website was up, just so you know.
All due respect, Commissioner, I have no fact on that. I can tell you how I was treated with the two applications I put in. I hope you consider our grant. It's a worthy project. Just to note, we do all of the elementary school in Bloomfield, Mespo Elementary every year for free. We want to continue to do that. We need handicapped accessible to get those kids upstairs to that museum. The children that are handicapped accessible cannot go upstairs. We do our fundraisers. We work very hard. We have a wonderful board to have our, our chair here for the building. And so I think it is moving forward. Yes, there was some confusion, but anytime you start a project, you're going to have some confusion. So if this is a public meeting, I would stress to anybody that has ARP meaning to go to the workshops. That's where the work, excuse me, I'm not done. That's where the work, that's where the work happens. That's where we figure it all out. I did my own research on ARP. Because if you want something, you got to dig for it. I felt like we were, we were, we were taking care of, Mr. Misaki got back to me and I enjoyed coming to the workshops and presenting my grants. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, so I was proposing that we have, there are a lot of people who applied before that website was up that didn't or weren't given the information on how to do that or the proper process and their, their application, they're just like sitting in limbo without any kind of type of feedback. So I, so, so that's another reason why we need to have a dedicated meeting for this. And instead of just, you know, a couple of projects here and there, someone says, hey, come to our workshop, you know, we, we.
Schedule a meeting. I'll give you a second on the meeting. Let's move on.
Right, yeah.
Schedule a meeting will be there.
Well, again, we make sure that the staff has put together this, the information that we need in order to make those final decisions. So as soon as I get that, I intend to schedule a meeting because that also jams up our state legislature and we have, we have state representatives who are looking for projects that they can actually present for, and other budgets at the state to have alternate funding. But we need to know what we're acting on and what we're not acting on in order to push those things through. So they have ARPA money to spend at the state, but if we don't get the, it together at the county and decide what's being done and what's not, we're not going to be able to shift those on to our state representatives to try to get more funding back to Trumbull County.
I'm sure if you make a meeting and you publicize it, Commissioner Frenchco, the ARP people that are interested will attend that meeting.
Well, that's what, that's what I would like to do, but we need to have our administrative staff do something that I've asked them to do for, for a while. So as soon as that's done. As soon as I, as soon as I know that's going to be done.
Sure it's done.
We'll make sure that's done.
Myself if I have to.
Great, thank you. You have a computer. Okay.
Schedule a meeting. You can schedule a meeting without a laptop on your phone if you want to.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I, I just need to know.
For the vote. Wait for the.
No, there's no vote. There's no vote.
Okay. Thank you for your time. Very much appreciate it.
Legal. Next. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name's Borfideo C. Torres III. I'm from Southern Ten, Ohio. AKA PC Torres. The reason I wanted to say that is because I'm going to get ahold of you commissioners because, and I want my face to be known because, you know, sometimes it's nice to put a face with a, with a name. The reason I'm here, Trumbull County has a problem with drugs. And I'm going to, I'm going to make that clear. Trumbull County has a problem with drugs. I'm living it. I'm burying my nephew to bar.
Story.
Another family member just got out of jail. I don't think he was there long enough, but you know, they want the room, you know, a lot of people, not just courts, not just the police, not just, you know, everyday citizens, they look at drug addicts as losers. You know, it's sad, sad. I'm thirty-one years clean. You know, I was a drug addict. I was a drug dealer. I did some felony things, but guess what? I never got caught. So does that make me, am I, am I the person to judge somebody? I did the same things we're doing today. Okay? I want Trumbull County to take the lead in the country, not just, I don't care where the drugs are coming from, whether it comes from Mexico or China or wherever. I don't care where they're coming from. They're here. We need something in Trumbull County. You know, I'm going to use a quote of Martin Luther King. I had a dream. I had a dream. We had a facility here that, you know, the place for drug addicts are not, or alcoholics is not jail. Jail doesn't rehabilitate you. You know what I'm saying? And I think we need a facility that teaches addicts to learn how to live life again, you know, and I, I'm not, I'm not getting on any political party, but I don't want to hear this no more. I'm tired of the political parties. Work together. I'm talking nationwide, not just Trumbull County. I'm going to work together for the citizens of Trumbull County. I don't care about what other counties do, you know, so I'm not qualified educationally wise to do it. But I'm educate, I'm qualified because I'm, I live the life and I see it every day. And nothing's being done from the disadministration and I don't mean that in disrespect to the past or late administration. Drugs are something that we hide in our families and I'm not going to hide it in my family. You know, saying it's like, I could only take care of my household. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of meetings, places, people have meetings, they have, they have halfway houses. It's still not working. It helps some people. You know, you have churches that have meetings, you know, it, it's, it helps people, but it doesn't help everyone. But there, there's a way to do it. You know, the only way you can understand it is to live it. And I don't care what kind of education you have and just you can show me this statistic. I can show you a statistic that, that'll counteract that. But that's not what I'm here for. I'm asking you to step up as Trumbull County Commissioners to find out what we can do. Let's, let's lead the country in this. Okay? All right. So that's about all I got to say. And then, like I said, if I call you or email you, please give me the respect to give me a call back and just, you know, say, hey, I heard this or, you know, I don't know about funding. You know, I work for the city of Warren. I work for the water department. So I could tell you about some water. Okay? That's all I can tell you, but I can't tell you about what, what it's like to be a drug addict, a drug dealer. You know, I mean, not a convicted felon because I never got, I've got a clean record, but I've done felony things. I might say that again. I just never got caught. You know, so, so that doesn't make me any better than the person that's in jail right now. I personally think jail is not the answer for these guys, man. You know, they need rehab. You know, they need to learn how to live life as, as a regular person, you know, and what is a regular person actually, you know? But that, that's not the life. And I, I ask you that, you know, I was prophesied five years ago by, by a preacher, didn't know me from the man in the moon. He said to me, man, something, something about you has, you know, he goes, you look like a fighter. And I'm thinking to myself, was my nose smashed or something? I didn't know what he meant, but he goes, he goes, no, I don't mean fighting. He goes, something, you have to do something with addiction. This guy didn't know me from the man in the moon, but that was five years ago and I'm today, two thousand twenty-three, I finally got my head out of my butt and got down here and said, what, where can I, where can I, what can I do? All I can do is ask you to find out something. You, you guys know that what, what money comes in through the state, through the country. You know, we, we have to take some of our money. I'm not saying roads aren't important. I ain't saying infrastructure ain't important, but I'm telling you, what's ruining Trumbull County is drugs and drug addiction, nothing else. Okay? So thank you for your time.
Mr. Torres, thank, thank you for your time. Your story is a story I think of every resident in Trumbull County has been touched by that. I don't think there's a family in this county that's immune to that. It is, it is a problem. It's something that I know I pledge as commissioner and I think the whole board would agree to, if it's funding, if it's something, if there's a magic pill out there that we can give to stop this. If there's something we do funding wise with the sheriff's department or police entities or, or, or the mental health and working with April and her department, I mean, we're all for it. And, and you staking the stand up here representing the face of the people in Trumbull County is admirable. It's courageous. And if we do anything and you see that we, you, you see a fit where we can enable you to be a leader with that too, by all means, my phone line's always open. Call any of us. And I think unilaterally, that's something that crosses all party lines and all prejudice of any sort, you know, we all understand this problem and you just kind of really opened up some eyes today by your bravery. So thank you. So.
I'd like to, can I speak to that? Talk about being a drug dealer but never getting caught. That's my first memory was a drug raid, three years old. So I, I can identify with that. I've got a family member who, who sold and abused and still does. And I know about these problems intimately. And I think that one of the major things that's lacking in Trumbull County is, and also let me preface this and they'll probably mock me for this, but I'm also a licensed social worker. In the first years of my career, I worked in mental health for Birdman Group. And so that's important to me. Often what you see is dual diagnoses, people with substance abuse and mental illness. And we don't have enough facilities to treat people like that. That's a priority of mine because I know that once, you know, which, which came first? Are people using the substances in order to self-medicate? Or are these substances inducing things like schizoaffective or schizophrenic type disorders because the, you know, the boost of norephinephrine or something in your brain. So I see these things going on, you know, right now, even in my, my own family and it's, it's difficult. And one of the things that are my priorities, I hope we can, we can accomplish that is making sure that we get to implement the opioid abatement strategy, but there are also other, other drugs and other, other ones that are being over prescribed right now. And one of them is given for ADHD. It's Adderall and they're passing it out like candy at, to people. And there's a national shortage of it right now because of the doctors over prescribing it. And I've already reached out to my state representatives because of family members with, with these doctors who are, you know, cranking them out, kind of like they did with the, the opioid ones. I can't remember oxy and things. They're doing the same thing now with the, with Adderall. And it's scary because I, I mean, I personally would like to see also that they're doing physical evaluations and mental health evaluations before prescribing these things to identify differential diagnoses. So someone might present with maybe symptoms of ADHD, but it could be due to having thyroid issues or something. So it's, it's concerning. Like I want to see physical health evaluations, mental health evaluations before people are prescribed things that they end up getting addicted to because then once they get cut off, that's when they turn to buying things from the street. It is a tremendous problem in, in Trumbull County and all over the country. And it's actually the leading, the leading problem that causes homelessness.
I, I would just like to say, well, add one thing and I promise I'll keep it brief, but you, you are absolutely right. We are not going to arrest our way out of this problem. We thought we could do that years ago. That's not the solution. When Trumbull County, I believe it was six years ago, we a, a prior board with myself, Mr. Fuda and Mr. Flipka, were one of the first counties to take on litigation with opioid addiction and, and we were able to win that lawsuit barring any appeals and everything like that. But there are going to be millions of dollars funneled back into this community because of the foresight of Mr. Misaki and our board and our board members. So that's going to go to prevention and education, addiction and treatment. And we know one thing about treatment is it's, it, it's not a short-term thing. It can't be. It's not successful over a short-term period, but a long-term treatment means more money, obviously. But that's, you know, we're fortunate in Trumbull County because we got some of this money coming back to us. And I think that we've already started with our mental health recovery board and our sheriff's department and, and all of our law enforcement and our courts and abatement strategy that we can, we can implement that's going to try to meet this head-on in those three categories. And I feel for you, man. I, I mean, I, we all, as Denny said, we all, we all have relatives or friends that are, fall victim to this and it means not, it doesn't matter your socioeconomic status, doesn't, you know, it sees none of that. It doesn't see any of that. So we're, we're committed to, to meet that head-on and those funds, we're going to fight like hell to keep those funds here in Trumbull County once we get them. And we're going to put them to good use.
Piggybacking off of what PC is trying to bring to court. Actually, he, PC is one of the members or one of the attendees that come to see our sanctuary Healing Hearts meeting. We can stand up here all day and talk about the problem and that we've got this money, but what we need is a solution. He says jail is not the answer. He's correct, but jail does keep people alive. So I am in agreeance and I'm going to jail until we can get them into a facility. In my daughter's case, what kept her alive was jail and we always worked with her probation officers. She was only in jail long enough until we could get her into a, an extended rehabilitation place. That would be a nice program Trumbull County could bring where they have one person. In my daughter's case, she's fortunate. I was hands-on in working in that and very understanding. Of course, she didn't steal everything I owned also. So there's that, that happens in families. But maybe if Trumbull County can have one advocate or two advocate people who work in between, once a, an addicted person, I hate to call them addicts and alcoholics because that does not define who they are. So you'll never hear me say that. These are people. And those, and those are characteristics that they have. It doesn't define them. So people with addiction problems, if they do go to jail and they have a couple advocates that work directly with jail and then a long-term facility, we have an ideal facility planned out for Sierra Sanctuary. We just don't have the funding where they learn, relearn how to live again and learn life skills, mind, body and soul, not just, which does include faith. But it's not just the Bible and it's not just talking about an addiction problem. It's like, what are you doing with your free time now? People who become addicted are actually the most intelligent people in the world. They spend every second of the day accomplishing their goal and that's to get their next fix. They're extremely intelligent. They just need to learn how to use, re redirect that time that they've used. But if we could come up with some kind of program, we could have it, we could be a, a set of precedents where someone works with these people once they do go to jail. But I am in agreeance to, and I'm going to tell you why, to send in them to, to jail for this for multiple reasons. One, it gets them off the street and it gets them from bringing it to someone else or bringing it home and their loved ones accidentally touching it and dying. Another one is they are alive while they're in jail. Contrary to the medical stuff that we're hearing, as happens in our jail, that's not true. My daughter spent many years alive because of jail, but she wasn't there very, like she'd spend, you know, the longest, I think was three months until we could get her into an extended stay facility, which, and I'm talking eleven months, not thirty days. Thirty days is nothing. It doesn't reprogram your mind. It just keeps your body from now. It, it's, your body is still getting rid of those substances, actually. If you go off coffee for thirty days, you're still trying to get rid of the, that what's in that, let alone these stronger substances. But anyway, maybe if we would, if you all would entertain us meeting with you and we could set maybe a, a, a small committee that would start working directly with the jails and with the probation officers, because the probation officers are very willing to in lieu of jail, send people to these facilities. They want to see them live. It gives them a purpose for their position. So I, I apologize. I just, since we're talking about it, I didn't mean to, well, yes, I didn't mean to cut in front of you, but I just wanted to get it out. And so maybe we could call you guys this week and try to set something up. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you both. Hey, Mr. Peterson.
I just wanted to, Roger Peterson, Bloomfield Township, just wanted to thank you gentlemen for the workshop, for the public meeting on Monday that we were at for the workshop for the art money. Thank you for walking us through it. Thank you for the discussions. Thank you for Mr. Misaki's help. Thank you for the response to the emails and the text messages. Appreciate it. Appreciate the support that you're going to be giving to the. Appreciate the support that you're gonna be giving to the Bloomfield Township Project, we've not received uh, any county grant money that I'm aware of for anything like this since nineteen eighty-five. So I just wanted to say thank you, and we'll be looking forward to hearing from you on the project.
And Mara, I'd like to move this one forward to legal also, if I get a second to do that.
Absolutely.
So we'll move that through Mr. Misaki over to legal and hopefully get an answer for you soon.
Thank you, sir.
But great presentation again, Monday.
Raymond, if you wanted, it's right here.
Anybody else from the public? For the good of Trumbull County. Mr. Chang, did you have something you wanted to say was calling? Not ready this time yet.
Maybe Mr. Agler here.
Good morning, everyone, and I will keep this brief. Um, you know, I'm the Director of Agriculture for the county. Uh, it's a busy job in spite of what people might think. Um, but we just recently received a state grant, which I'm really happy for. Uh, and I just want to give a big thank you to everybody involved. You know, it's not about one person in this county. You know, um, it takes everybody working together and, and to make this wagon roll down a road. And, and that's what we have to do. So um, Amy Rear from the Soul and Water Conservation District, Julie Green from the Planning Commission. Uh, not to mention, you know, any less of Sandy O'Brien who brought this to us. Uh, there's been a lot of people involved with this, this grant has taken a year and three months to put together. Uh, coming from the state of Ohio, um, it went a lot of different chambers before it ended up with the Ohio Department of Agriculture. Uh, before it ever, you know, it, it's just been a lot of people involved, and I just want to thank everybody for all their help, and these people need to be recognized for what they do, so uh, big thank you to everybody that's helped to make this, it's just a little grant, but in a scheme of things, it's a big grant, and it's gonna help us do a lot of things, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, nobody else on the floor? Okay, let's go to the uh, phone lines. For the good and welfare of Trumbull County, for the good and benefit.
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Unmute your line and state your name.
Hello?
Hello? Alright, which one's going first?
Nobody?
Go ahead.
Alright, this is Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. I'd like to clear some stuff up that was discussed in the meeting this week and last week. Uh, last week I asked some questions of Ms. Frenchco, and she refused to answer those questions.
That sounds really good. I was on the phone on my way here. Um, more importantly, um, after several conversations with people last week regarding a recent Commissioner's ruling and court ruling, um, on Sunday, I decided to make a post to give people the opportunity to voice their opinions in a clear and concise way. The post specifically stated, be polite, hostility helps nothing. We may not be able to change the outcome of this case, but perhaps we can help justice be served for future animal abuse victims. The only names specifically mentioned were commissioners in a summary of case facts. For whatever reason, people I'm not friends with on social media or in real life decided to creep on my post and turn something intended to have a positive impact on future animal cases into a shitshow. Um, specifically, um, Brian Flanagan, the union president, who stated, the fact that you created this post to continue to discriminate against a black man in this community is terrible. This post shows you are actually not a compassionate person. Let's also get something straight. Arbitrarily speaking, we could have had Chuck Parks working back at the dog pound. The idea to move him instead of being continually harassed and discriminated against, I'd suggest to let sleeping dogs lie. And continues with, the situation with Mr. Parks is personal and political. I for one believe the way you're treating him, that you would have no problem executing him. I also believe you are inhumane with your actions. First of all, I don't discriminate. I spoke publicly about situations involving people of authority, white people of authority in Lodi, California and Euclid, Ohio. And the only father my blond-haired, blue-eyed child has ever known is a tall, dark-skinned black man. Secondly, I don't even believe in the death penalty. Third of all, why is it okay for a county employee, let alone the union president, to intentionally search for my post and make such egregious accusations during work hours against a private citizen in the county? I live in the county, I do not work for the county.
Thank you.
I would say if that, if that, I haven't seen the post, I'm just
I have the screenshots if you'd like to see them.
It's reprehensible, but, but uh, you know, I think the, the actions of the individual speak for themselves, unfortunately. And that post should be removed if it hasn't been already. Because it's making some wild accusations that just aren't there. And I apologize.
I guess I'll, I'll make a quick little statement on too, I get, I get a little heat after last week. Um, from some of the animal crowd, of which I consider myself one of them, uh, on why didn't you vote with Mara to fire the guy? The vote that we had at the last meeting was not whether to fire him or to not fire him, it was whether to agree to the union settled grievance or the union settled uh, agreement for him to move to a different department. Uh, I, when I took over here as Commissioner, this has already gone on from six months before I got here. And I felt the way it was handled in those six months from the Board of Commissioners all the way through HR, um, that a lot of it was bungled. And, and the gentleman deserved a second chance based on that for the mistakes by the previous board, as far as how long they kept him on unpaid leave and lack of communication back and forth, there should have been something settled back then. If I'd have been Commissioner back at the time, and the facts are as I see they are now, yeah, I would have voted with Mara to fire the guy. But, and I would vote to fire any employee that disrespects, disregards the safety, the feeding, the care of any animals, I'll do that in a heartbeat. So my vote was not reflective on my opinion of the facts of the case, it was my vote as to move him away from the dog kennel, so there was zero chance he would get a chance in a grievance to go back to that job. And that was the, the avenue that I felt was the most responsible as Commissioner to take it that time for the benefit of the public and the benefit of the animals there, so that's why I voted the way that I did, um, to move him away from there. So don't let that be a, a weakness thing in the future that, you know, that I'm against animals in any way, shape or form, or I'm against that. It just wasn't my place to come in, Johnny come lately, seven months after the fact, and make a ruling on something I wasn't privy to in the beginning, and I felt um, the process, he kind of earns a little bit of a pass because of the way the process was handled by the previous board.
I'd like to speak to that also, uh, back last year when the person was put on leave, it was done contrary to the revised code. Administrative leave has to be done, uh, if it's unpaid, only if it's a felony. The Board of Commissioners, not including myself, violated the Ohio Revised Code. They also violated the union contract by putting someone on unpaid leave twice for the same thing. That's also a problem. Because of the mistakes that the board made, it put him in a position where we were about to go to a grievance and, or binding arbitration. Going to binding arbitration costs tens of thousands of dollars, we would have lost. There's no doubt in my mind, because when you make mistakes that are contrary to the collective bargaining agreement and to the law that governs how we place people on leave, we, we, there's no chance of us succeeding through that. And so he would have not only been put back to his job, uh, but also been given interest. Because the law states that someone unlawfully put on that lea- on, on leave, you know, that they should have interest too. So we acted, I believe, in the most appropriate fashion to protect the board against a losing arbitration.
I respectfully disagree.
You know, and let's hope there isn't a next time in this situation here.
Well, you know what? We, we've made leaps and bounds, and I've said this many times, within that dog pound, and now we're looking for a new facility. We can't go backwards, that's not what we want to do, and, and putting this person back over there would have been going backwards, so we went from you know, a very deplorable place to a place that's basically a zero kill, uh, pound. And we want to continue on that to treat animals the way they should be treated, the, the dogs, as they should be treated, and um, you know, hopefully, like you said, this is a step where we can move forward. And it's a wake-up call to everybody that goes in that pound that, you know, that it's not gonna be tolerated, so.
I, I did want to speak to the comment that you said. I, I believe in the First Amendment, but I also believe in following our rules, and, but there's nothing in our, in our rules, uh, actually, if an employee makes a comment and they're a classified or union employee that says something that, or does something that's politically motivated or based on a partisan political activity, that's not allowed, that's actually a misdemeanor. But for someone to give their opinion about what happened is absolutely within his rights, even as a county employee. So I, I, I protect those rights, I respect the, the right to freedom of speech, and so whether or not he said something that um, you disagreed with, I just have to say that, that, that's permissible. And I, I respect that right, as long as it's not contrary to uh, the revised code as it relates to classified employees participating in partisan political activity.
I hope that goes for all employees then. Because there's been employees that have been maligned for their First Amendment rights and, and speaking out uh, about different things, and you've not taken that same stance.
Okay.
So if anything, we have to be very consistent in applying.
Yes, and so I, I'm happy you brought that up. We have a lot of employees that are classified employees who are participating in partisan political activities, running social media sites.
They have First Amendment rights.
No, but they're particip- yes, partisan political activities. Say they're working to get a actual Democrat or Republican employee elected, they can't do that. Say they're working to get a Republican or Democrat, um, I'm sorry, candidate elected or candidate removed, that's partisan. If it's a nonpartisan issue, it's different, and it doesn't, it doesn't violate the law, the code. But, but what we have is employees actually, you know, and it was led by the HR department last time too, with under, under Richard Jackson and having some of our Commissioners Office staff participating in those activities, but um, it, it was ignored.
One partaking in those activities was you online. That was demeaning office staff, that was demeaning colleagues, it was demeaning other elected officials.
You're talking, no, no.
No, 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 that's, that's the truth.
Are you violating anything that you're talking?
And if you want to.
Point of order, no, no, if you're gonna talk, if it, if it's outside of what our, our, we're allowed to speak.
I let you finish all the time.
You know, I have to make sure. I have to make sure. Yes, for the record, I'm objecting to any comments made by Commissioner Cantal Mesa, it doesn't
You should allow me to speak.
It doesn't reply, it doesn't reflect.
You just talked about First Amendment.
Sorry, we have litigation and we have to abide by what we're allowed to discuss and what
I'm not talking about anything with the litigation.
What you said.
It's fact. Go look it up on your page.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion adjourned. Motion adjourned. Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yeah.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes. Me? Did anybody hear me?
Is that the letter?
Yeah, these are
The sign? Did you? It wasn't modified since yesterday, right?
No, that should, that should be there.
Yeah, that's what we got yesterday. Okay.
Hello, there's people that wanted to talk in this meeting that didn't get to talk.